It's good. Go right ahead.
All right, seven oh three P M. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, we have farm. We need to roll.
Yeah, Molly and.
Here.
Uh, Lisa.
Here.
Matthew Johnson.
Here.
And Grisco.
Here.
Shannon Strasser.
Here.
Okay, great. Agenda. We need any adjustments to this? I guess my question is, did we not approve the April twenty twenty two minutes last year?
No, it was part of the joint session. I was cleaning up all the minutes.
No.
Uh, it's right around when I started. Thank you for noticing. I would appreciate it to do it while we still have our current council.
Okay, um. Agenda, do we agree to the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
So, okay, all in favor?
Uh, aye.
Oh, very good. Do you want approval of past meeting minutes? Um. This one comment, the meeting from April third, my point about the town council liaison was I didn't want town council to just change um the liaison kind of just because or on a cyclical basis. I wanted it to be for a reason, not just something cyclical or just because.
I can edit those minutes. Uh, and you could approve them as discussed. I'll touch base with you too also. Uh, that's what I wrote.
Okay.
But I think that's clear enough for me.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment?
I make a motion to approve the past meeting minutes for April fourth, twenty twenty two, April seventh, twenty twenty two, April third, twenty twenty three, and April twenty first, twenty twenty three, as discussed.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Report on relevant actions by the town council.
One of them. With the the process that the town has been undergoing to replace our town administrator. Mr. Paulus, what is it again, your final date?
The nineteenth, sir.
Nineteenth of May. And the process, there had been a work group under the office of the government services committee and there were interviews and those interviews have gone through the town council, so that didn't happen. Uh, that has been something that the town council was working to find a new town administrator, so that one too. Pretty important thing. Uh, we've also been.
The question really, do they have any candidates lined up? Do they have interview schedules or anything?
Yes, there have been interviews, there have been meetings. In fact, we had a meeting prior to this meeting to one of the steps of the process. So there's not, the position is not currently filled yet, but it's in the process.
Okay.
So, okay, I hear this.
I'm trying to think of what there been. Something about what like. It's
Pregnant question.
It's in the process. So we just had another recent meeting this evening prior to this meeting and there's not, there's not a final um step to it yet. And I think it's fair to say there's, we are inviting more applicants. I think that is, that is so publicly that, that the process is continuing right. The town council has had some strategic meetings as the planning mission under the opportunity of trying to think together about what future projects in the town will be involved in, and that is still ongoing. So the, as a planning commission, you know, we have part of that. Also, there's ongoing discussion about the town budget and ongoing discussion about the roles and assignments in town committees, although that hasn't been talked about the last few meetings, that's still not fully resolved in terms of what, how that will be. A little bit more recently, we've been spending more time on the issue of, of the town administrator and the issue of the strategic planning. There's also the issue of rezoning on five twenty Valley Street. And Matt, maybe you could say one thing about that, and then I'll talk a little bit about the discussion about it. What were we doing again with that? Why did it come up?
It, it was a zoning map amendment on that um vacant uh side guard uh between Dina Radley's house and the Stinson house. Uh, planning commission took that up several months ago and um recommended to maintain the existing zoning, not to resell it, because there was not enough clear information about what the owner's intentions were. Um, they did provide a fair amount more detail. So planning commission was working with um less information than what town council ended up with.
And then town council actually voted to approve. Uh, 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 so the, the mayor wrote that, that on the vote to approve the change and that followed a conversation mostly about trying to follow up on what was done. I mean, the people of different sides, some people thought they should not do that because it had not either been approved in planning commission or the other idea was that this was needing to be done because it was fulfilling what should have been done years ago. So that, that was the sign that eventually went off.
I'd like to just make a comment about that and say that I think that a lot of it was handled poorly and not at anyone's fault. It just was not clear what we were dealing with. I didn't think we were dealing with an application. It was just a clerical change. Um, you know, and, and I would have loved to have heard from Dina Radley. I had no idea. We, we had no indication that she was gonna prepare any materials or let us know. And the reason why we voted, I'm not really sure why we voted. We had to vote for a no. We probably would have been better off to say we don't have enough information to make this decision and it would come back to us at another time. I just wanted to point that out. You don't think that's true? No, I think we had to decide because sixty days to decide yes or no, the recommendations of town councils, yes or no. Uh, was it an S U P and that's why we had to do that? I didn't, I thought it was just a clerical thing and then it became a thing.
That's, that's a good point about, about generally take, taking more time for sure.
Yeah.
Um, I don't recall which deadline supply when or there's.
Go, but it was kind of put to us as a clerical fix.
That's right.
And then it became much more than that. I, I personally didn't want to vote on something that is twenty years old. That may not be applicable in this time. Give me more details, like why are we doing this? You know, why? Why should it change? You know? And that was influenced by stuff I heard about the story too. So it would have been much better if we had a clear um sense of what was going on and could vote on it in a meaningful way. And I got the feeling that town council didn't feel like we gave it a meaningful try. Uh, because they didn't understand why we voted no. And I think that the information was completely stunted. There was no uh flow or continuity there and um, I think it's a good learning tool for us, but I do feel like um, you know, in the end, it was probably all the right decision. I just didn't make that decision without knowing a little bit more. So um, I'm glad it's resolved and that's a good thing. We'll move on, but I just wanted to give my opinion.
If that's helpful, it was clear that the information presented to us that the council was much more robust than what was presented to the planning commission and that isn't what you want. You want to have the flow to be the same.
I think that it was, it was a misunderstanding from the beginning.
Right.
It was just a clerical thing, but then it turned into what seemed like an application that we never saw.
Right. Well, and then I was very surprised because I was under the impression you were under that it was, we were cleaning up old things.
Yeah.
Um, but then when we had the public hearing, there were quite a few people who came and spoke out in opposition to rezoning it, which is why I voted no.
Right.
On it. And I was very surprised people came out. I, I was very surprised by that. I didn't, I didn't really. I feel like I was under the same impression you were under.
Yeah, so I think a little more structure or some sort of pinpoint in what we were in.
Yeah.
But I think that in the end, I think it was fine to do it that way and just. Stand there.
One, one last point I will mention would be, there was and there, and there still is an ongoing conversation, which is not exactly the same conversation about committees as to the difference between town procedures that have been done and the town code, because some of what has happened in terms of practice isn't exactly code, it's practice. And so the procedure, there's been, some of it's come from government service, you know, saying, hey, this is what the code says, but in practice it's been different. So there's been some conversation related to the council as to lining up both the practice and code. And in different ways that the committees either relate with board or the actions that the mayor would take. So that is also something that I would say is still in the process. Normally, some of that is, are things that can be resolved with when the council vote changes. It's a little bit trickier now because we have different times of how codes come in. It used to always be uniform. Now it's a split in terms of how people come in. We typically do that as a set to my, so.
That, that sounded like a very good thing to review.
Yeah.
Yeah, awesome.
It is a good thing. I think that's it.
Um, Ellie Morse is wanting to know what we want to do about the follow-up on the strategic plan. So she had emailed and presented a couple of options, whether it was that we all get together again. We had made this scheduled, so I guess we don't have any good schedules anymore. Um, but, so that was one option, the whole group, but the difficulty was getting everybody together in the same place. That's, you know, the challenge. There's ten of us or whatever the number is. Um, or should we be doing this via email and making decisions that way? Or should we be designated a small group, like one or two people from each committee to get together and work on it? So what are your thoughts?
I would personally be um more interested in having like a couple of small group sessions where the individuals who are discussing it rotate a little bit, leave notes for the next group, and that way multiple eyes get on what we're working on. And that way, the smaller, it seems a lot more easy to.
So it's a small group, multiple small groups?
I think a couple. No reason to go too far with that, but uh, I think a couple would be good.
Um, what else?
And then I have to talk to her this evening, but prior to this meeting, she was talking about trying to integrate several different people from town council, people from planning commission and other citizens into the strategic planning to, to move forward. So I do think she was looking for somebody or maybe a person from the planning commission, but a couple depending on the timing of how they would do that. So that might fit into what you're saying.
So now we're getting people from outside?
Is that without accurate, Matt, with your, in terms of the way she explained it?
Potentially if necessary, um, you know, key, key business owners or active citizens who might want to be simply involved some other way.
I feel like we're getting a little clouded on why we set out to do this in the first place. Okay.
All right, I think we, I think you're right. Um, I, I will, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to say that, um. It was kind of a mystery to me when we were going into this strategic planning meeting. I really thought that it was a way for us to meet together and come to a consensus and come to a little bit more of an understanding about what town council, how they operate, what they want, things like that.
Yeah.
And then getting there, all of a sudden we're formulating a document, you know, for the future. I think that I was not maybe in the right headspace for that because I really honestly was not sure that that's what we were working on. I don't know of anyone else.
I, I think I made it very clear that I, that's exactly how I felt. And yeah, I was, I, I, I'm not opposed to doing it and I'm glad that we're having the discussion. But I, I felt very unprepared during that meeting to come in and and be like creating a document with them. I thought we were just gonna be working on relationship building.
Yeah.
Which we are, but this was way beyond that, I thought.
I think so.
Yeah.
But if, like, I agree with you that there is, um, you know, there was a little bit of a misunderstanding. Um, now we're in it. And I don't feel like we've got a full effect of the first meeting, but.
Which is why I, I've been feeling this frustration all along. It's just this lack of communication and, and like, what are we doing? And I just constantly feel blindsided by stuff.
Well, now that we know what it is, I'm a little bit better.
Yeah.
Uh, I would have liked to have had another meeting with town council. I really feel like we were on the edge of being so like productive and talking amongst ourselves with
Right.
The town council members. Um, and that wasn't part of the agenda. So I was really enthusiastic about that, but then we had to focus on the strategic plan, so. I think some somewhere, you know, uh, purpose. Um, communication.
I will say, I, even though it wasn't exactly what we were prepared to be coming into, I think it was really valuable. Um, I think uh, uh, Ms. Morse uh was an excellent facilitator for that. I think it's pretty valuable.
Yeah.
And I'm
I agree.
Very interested in having like a regular buy-in rule, that kind of thing. Joint meeting between town, town council and planning commission because it was really beneficial for me to be sitting in the same room uh with the town councillors and hearing how they're feeling about the same things that we're working on.
And I cannot tell you how many conversations I've had in the last week, two weeks that had to do with, oh my God, we totally thought you guys were, you know, on this page. We don't know we're on this page. There was a lot of um assumptions about things that were happening and I think it's really helpful to have talked that through with other you know, councillors to find out, you know, what's the plan? What are you guys up to? What do you need from us?
So, um, I think then, so I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing this is a worthwhile endeavor, but I'm also hearing we weren't expecting this and it's not what we had embarked upon. So what do we want to do? Do we want to continue down this path? Or do we want to refocus it? Because I, you know, have some concerns about continuing too far down this path because this is work that really does involve the public and there's a content conversation. So I thought we'd get things started, but then continue in the content process. So I don't want us to spend an enormous amount of resources on this.
Right.
When it's really just trying to get us to the next phase, which we need to be working on, so.
Yeah, we're running out of time, I think.
Yeah.
We've, um, we only meet once a month, you know, and we're we're getting places. We're doing the work, but I think we've been derailed from the content.
Yeah, we, we sure have. We haven't spent any meaningful time on it in a few months now. So I, I want to make sure that we get back to that and we can cover that. Um, hopefully we'll make some progress on A to figure out the strategy moving forward, um, for a sick A. But so what do we want to do for strategic plan?
I feel like those small group discussions kind of speak to a little bit of what you're saying. That we shouldn't be putting too many like official structured resources into it. Um, having a small group, even though we're still paying attention to it, I think having a small group allows us to do both things in tandem.
And each, um, each small group would be facilitated by Ellie, so we'd have to check in for about her resource, but it's because I'm seeing that she was jumping in, keeping close to a lot of things. I think Chicago has a lot of, um, pots on the fire. Um, so what do you guys think about the suggestion on the table, small groups, a couple of different small groups?
It's good to keep communicating. Can't be bad. But I understand what you're saying about we need to get on a conflict and maybe none of this stuff. But I'm just trying to say, I don't have an answer for you because I see those segments.
Well, let me ask you a question. Could we, could we delegate um to people to be in a small group and continue the conversations and then just report back to the larger group and kind of take it from there?
I think that would be beneficial.
Like maybe one small group? Do you, you think that?
I, I don't know if two are necessary. I think if there's like some good, clear discussion at one, I think that's probably gonna be sufficient.
Okay. All right, you'd like to um volunteer for that?
I'll volunteer.
I will, I'll see you go.
Okay. All right, very good. I'll pass along that suggestion.
Um, yes, so it's a, uh-huh, sure.
Any other information from town council, actions from town council?
That would be the most relevant things.
Yeah. All right, very good. Matters from the public? Matters from the public, anyone?
You do not have anyone online yet.
Okay, very good. Uh, matters from the public is closed. New business. Lincoln, hi.
Hello, hi.
Thanks for having me back.
Yes, glad to be back. Yeah, good, good to see you here in this all. Tell us a little bit about yourself and your work and what you're involved in. Well, I was really excited to get to know y'all uh last year. And uh, I did my toe into Scottsville's comprehensive plan. It may run a, uh, you know, uh, steps. So I'd like to continue on and assist you however I can in the next couple of months. Yeah.
Yes, please.
Maybe one to two days per week, a little more here and there whenever you need me. Um, I joined, was it about ten days ago in your, 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 your finding meeting?
Yes.
So I've learned a lot there. Um, so glad to catch up on speed on more things and hope you out however I can.
Thank you.
Wow. Lincoln is the most qualified and also the most modest uh U V A connected professional that I have ever recruited here. Um, he's at the, working with us at the PhD level. Um, having uh completed uh high rank architecture programs in both the US and internationally. He's worked as a practicing architect and has some sense of what it's like to design and deliver construction projects. Some of our interns have had that experience before, but never with the combination of academic thought about how to make those processes work better. Um, so he has um studied policy, implemented policy, and then decided that he wants to come back and teach about it better. And I'm, I'm very impressed with his commitment to academia, where frankly, he could be making more money at an architecture firm. Um, U V A's program in architecture, I know, well, setting high expectations that he can deliver for you over the summer.
Yeah.
Um, I, I really love U V A's um architecture school program, the way that it combines landscape design, architecture, and urban planning in different disciplines. So where, where the V C U students that we work with tend to be a little more practically focused, the, the U V A ones are interested and, and skilled in connecting those disciplines. So they, they care about tree cover and native plants and they care about individual buildings looking good. But then in a program like Lincoln's, they care about the the policy that makes those things happen and how to go about making those policies in an effective way. So it's like backing up a couple of steps from this building looks good, which this body has to do, but then also on a project like the content has to get in front of that year to the time. So I, I think um the, the mix of problems that you were just describing, right? How we go about making good decisions about our future construction decisions? That's what he's interested in. And um, working at the pace and workload of a PhD program, he is able to read hundreds of pages and digest them and hear new staff reports. And that's what your content project is. Um, so I, I'm ready. So I'm proud to be um leaving you with this resource for the summer. And I think it'll really help renew that.
So Matt and I had a meeting uh about ten days ago also, and uh I handed over some, some information, took it over and uh hoped to continue it on. Uh, glad to meet with you individually and smoke discussions uh as we proceed. Just, uh, I'll give you my phone number, but email afterwards.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you. We'll loop you back in. Um, well, I guess we're, we're kind of there now. Um. Old business, I, we, should we bump up the public hearing so that Mr. Quick could have his time?
I'd agree with that.
Okay. All right, so um, Mr. Quick, how do you feel about that? Would you like to go next?
Um.
Okay. All right, um, item six, being special youth permit for tourist lodging, one ninety Popper Spring Road. Um, we're here for a public hearing and um this is your opportunity to share with us again about your proposal.
Uh, I think the documentation that you all have is pretty accurate for what I was planning. Um, there is a note there about the long term net that um has a nice view and it has been vacant for a while. And you know, as, as we have been looking at the town of Scottsville and sort of our financial structure is situated, it became apparent to me that maybe we should look at, or maybe I should look at doing something uh intensive, more intensive with it, or giving some type of benefit back to the, to the town. Um, and so therefore I started looking at either building something or actually bringing something in. And the thing that I think made the most sense was for the uh, you know, three small structures that we put there on the site um to take advantage of a maximum of three. Um, that would give this uh site a, a use that would benefit the town. Unfortunately, I, I, it can't be done without a special useful metal, the tourist logic. So that's pretty much what I'm asking for, especially useful metal for the three. And I'll, to clarify a couple of things that the first time that we talked about it, I think you saw the site. Um, and we were talking, I know Lisa, you had asked about the, the distance between, and I think it was off, I don't know exactly how distant, you know, that no was not huge. So, you know, I got to work with something so that maybe I think I was saying, you know, they were gonna be fifty feet apart. I don't think they're gonna make it fifty foot in order for me. So, I mean, you caught me off guard when you said it and I threw out a number and it was like, that's the right number for me to be going out, because I don't think it's possible. And you're not, it wasn't, but I'm just saying, the idea is to somehow put three. But the other thing is to just have the ability to do up to three. I don't want to do any more. I don't, I mean, it may realistically start with one and let me see how that work. And if that works okay, then maybe go to two and something like that versus just building something that's that is not tested in Scottsville. Uh, I think it would work. I really feel it would work, but as Lisa mentioned, and she's like, you know, an Airbnb short-term expert in a lot of ways, because for background, I mean, that and I was looking at it and thinking, ooh, you know, we are seeing the, the market for Airbnb, I say saturated, but I think it's more of a lot of people renting properties into um that arena that may used to be single-family homes. And, you know, when there was demand during the pandemic, coming out of pandemic, people were doing that. Now I'm seeing that maybe the prices, there's more supply, it's harder for this to work in, you know, you're trying to find competitive sort of avenues. The only competitive thing that this has is, is a view stop. I mean, it's a nice view, whether or not it works, who knows? But I want to try.
Is there, are there any structures on it now?
There are no, there used to be a, exist, there was a home there, that one time, that burned down many, many years ago. It was an overgrown site. There are no, there, there used to be a exist, there was a home there, that one time, that burned down many, many years ago, it was an overgrown site. There's nothing there. It's a clear, you can go by there anytime and walk up there and send a look. Because I really feel like that would be I mean, it's public hearing, I'm struggling to live, but I did, you know, you, you can go and look at it.
Matt, could you show the other, I just wanted to see the road up to it?
This is the laundromat, go up Poplar Spring, and then it's this um old poplar string is a, a steep up and around to get here, so you, you gain a fair amount of height. I think you had some phone calls on that. Was there any public comment that came to you?
There's just one to ask, uh they saw the public notice and that worked. Uh the, the little signs, um they were asking about uh what they were planning with a special use permit, and I described read out the staff report from last month to them over the phone. Um and then I shared with you just questions about how the road works.
From him, by the way?
I think at first they were like, what's, what's going on, and then I described the staff report and um they were appreciative that I read it out to them.
And so I actually sent a letter to sort of everybody around and just asked if they, I say everybody. I don't know if I sent it to the one at the top left, but I did send it to the Warrens to put people that behind the laundry mat is, I don't remember their name. Um Peterson, the folks, the data says that are north. Uh and then I also sent one to the George and Josie, and George and Josie, and, and then Elizabeth to the left. George and Josie did call, and one of the things, the, the reason that they called, the reason they're talking with that roadway is they sort of maintain that themselves. I don't think that's like a state road, it's one of these private type of things, and you know, I just know from experience that that's one of those roads that somebody has maintained, and George has taken advantage of, I think probably to do most of that, and his concern was what are you looking at doing at the road, to which I replied, I have no clue what needs to be done to that road yet, other than it's vacant, I'm not using it right now, but if I do do something like that, I'm willing to be a willing participant to figure out what needs to be done, if there is anything, because I
So you have a right of way there, is that correct, from the right, or is that?
I think I actually own half of that. I mean, you know, it's, it's, I think it goes and then everybody else, it used to be the whole that was an old state road, I think, as far as what I'm understanding, it went all the way up to, up to the Poplar Hill. Beyond the others, I mean, it, it went all the way up there.
So you'd be going in and just basically making a new turn to come down into the property or?
Well, you actually go up the hill, and then you turn right there, and you echo right, so you never you get there. And there's a driveway there now, it's not, um you know, it's a tight turn, um no doubt about it. The bar, out there, their house or something. Uh yeah, I mean, yeah, there, there's, you got rooms, kind of, but it's a, it's a prominent goal.
I drove up there, so you can't see it too well, but you take that turn like he said, then you just go up, goes up pretty quick. That's how you get that nice view.
Are you seeing any residences that you're going up that way, is, is that? You know, will that be bothersome or? Is that a?
These are, these are further up and, and screening. I don't know what they see from these houses. From, from here, you're, you don't see the buildings below because it is so tall and steep, you look past them.
You see the Warren house, the former.
Yeah.
The, the over there on the left hand side, which is why I sent the letter to them, because if they had concerns, I don't know, so you know, I just want to understand. No, and then as, as we're saying, the, the cop part during this time here, you really can't see up to the neighbors, you know, but that, that's just completely killing. And you really don't see the boost, I mean, you look over top of Mr. Peterson's house there, and you can see the hot roof there. I tried to say, I mean, but wait now, but you're gonna, up there, tell the town council, my God, what is he doing here? Well, what I'm saying is, you, you need to see it, you wouldn't under, if you're seeing the view up here, did you go walk up there, do you?
I stopped at a little gate.
Did you walk up?
Uh no, I was trying to get back.
Different, but you, you go there and you look at it, and that's been up there.
But
So there's a gate?
There's a, there's a gate.
Gate is a little bit exaggerated, it's, it's a chain link that's to stop somebody in a car from driving all the way up.
That, what actually the reason that that exists is that the people up there used to say that people would come up there and not pick you. And, and because it's, it's absolutely gorgeous, I mean, you know, it is really pretty, and that's why they would do it. So the previous owner put a, a chain there, and it's just, just a, it's another block or anything, it's just something that people think of us there.
Yeah, or one of those is uh high up the hill, I was driving too, so, but I didn't see them, I just looked around quickly.
And so there was no uh questions in this meeting from the public?
Yeah, you could guess, have to call, um.
This, yeah, this, this is public.
This is, yeah. Probably not. Well, let's see, i- is, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this?
No one's on that.
Okay. Alright, um. Thoughts? On this question?
I think I said last time, I think it's a nice idea, I like the idea you had mentioned, you were looking at a certain type of little cabins or whatever, it's right for the use.
Yeah, there was a company, it's a thing, of land guest with all cones. So, so they, they're part of the model of the units, but they're actually really nice. I mean, they're substantial structure, but they're on a trailer, and they're no bigger than four hundred square foot. The one on the left is a little bit smaller, the one on the right actually has a lot, that's on the top. You know, the, the next part of this is, I mean, you know, as I was thinking about this, if you say yes, the, the town can, I mean, the architecture review board has to approve something that looks so, I, I that's not, and it's Scottsville historic, so I, I, I think it may even be.
They may vary the color or roofing material or something like that, we need to know the type and scale of it.
Right, right. But it's something that concerns me, because they, they can determine what they want to have there to a certain degree. Well, I mean, that's, it would be one of those, I mean, I would be going to that company and purchasing the, 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 that's a year, you give up, to the positive day, it's a year before they can deliver the units, they're very good at what they do. They, their quality, the, the last, I've seen some that have been, you know, ten years old from that company, and they still look brilliant. I was just a little bit fainted with the disdain that they had on it, but you know, other than that, they still look pretty good.
If, if the planning commission has any concerns or ideas about the style of this, you can convey that to the ARB, for them to work more closely on, things like the landscaping plan or the um holders are not uh under planning commission's control, but ARBs, but you can convey that to them so that they can take it up. If you have some interest, like the um, the tiger fuel cycle, and the landscaping was very important, so planning commission didn't make that decision, but conveyed it over to ARB, and then they did more work on it.
I guess my concern is we're going from a vacant land and residential. What was the zoning again?
Building.
Build residential, which is one dwelling unit in point seven acres, so we're looking at roughly that size, tell me again, okay, it's two point two seven, but it's flat and not buildable, so as far as the buildable area, it's probably what half or point seven? So we're going from one unit by right to now three units and a short term lodging. So that would be my hesitation, um. You know, if it was, if there was one residence and an accessory dwelling unit, that would be by right also, if you said that we dwelling unit would have to be a smaller size, whatever our specifications are on that. Um so it just caused me to hesitate a little bit. I mean, there's nothing there now, so it's nice to be something happening, and it's not going to be very developed, you're kind of working within the infrastructure that's already there on the land, so that's nice. Um and that just makes me, just makes me wonder, um not wonder, but pause, and you know, if you didn't have this model any longer, if you know, Airbnb collapses, then it was no longer profitable. Whatever the case may be, I would not want to see that turn into three apart, like re.
Oh, I don't think you can, I, I don't think that that would be, I mean, is that allowable? As, I mean, as individual units, single family?
Well, weren't you saying that you would, would just take them off of there?
Yeah, that
So if you could, if you could agree to that, that you would
Yeah, my, my hope was it's something to where it can be tried, I mean, to see what the market would be there, I mean, and it could be that they get pulled off, and I built something there, that maybe I, I just, it's, it's a whole lot less of a risk for me, these are like seventy thousand dollar, seventy five thousand dollar types of units to purchase and bring, we try it versus to be, you know, buying a lot, you know, doing all the infrastructure for one house, and I'm looking at the accessory dwelling unit, the concept, that's something that I'm sort of starting to look at in the market, that is potentially an option. I was looking at it from this is something I'm seeing done in other places, would it happen in Scottville? It might not even happen, nobody may even want to even come and look at it.
Like you said, is there a beautiful view, and I'm sure people wouldn't be here, yeah.
The other part of that is if I were to do a, 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 a laundry, it's the house, and then a accessory dwelling, it's gonna be a lot more money, quite frankly, to do that, and yes, it would come from the, I guess you would still get it from short term tourist lodging. Um but if it stopped being a tourist lodging, then there would not be any money coming to the town of Scottsville. My use was for tourist lodging to give money to the town of Scottville, because we do not have a real estate tax. Structural issue, this is something that in my opinion, I can help give money back to the town of Scottsville by doing this because we don't have a real estate tax, then it would make the town realize that these people are coming. They need to make it not to this, I'm not saying it's an alternative, but it's, it's what we're seeing in the town of Scottville that needs to, to do, so it would give me reason then to be a little bit more pushing on tourism or part.
Well, you know, if we're going to, if we're gonna tout Scottsville as a tourist town, we need lodging. We need tourist lodging, and this, these are perfect sizes for tourist lodging.
It fits the spirit.
It does, and you know, if I'm, you know, I don't particularly like camping, don't tell Luke. And if I'm coming down the river and I don't want to camp along the river, this is like, this is a perfect spot to just have people like coming off the rivers, spending a couple of nights in town, and then heading back down along the way, I just I'd like this idea a lot.
And just like a whole ride of the tree.
Yeah.
Just have a week out there.
So I have a logistical question, if somebody comes to uh send town council with an S U P. And let's say he does the tourist lodging and it, it isn't fitting with Scottville, and he's not able to do anything with that, can he dump the S U P and then default back to the original zoning or?
The, the base, the base zoning doesn't change, and those base uses stay. But yeah, you have that density calculation, so the, there's only two, the two point two acres. Is there, is that not a two acres?
It's not, it means does it have to be what's on the buildable?
No, um you, you can't propel it later.
Think about any setbacks, how would they come into play or?
If you, if you wanted to subdivide it, you, we go through that process, and you do your two lots subdivisions, you might get two house plots out of it, but it would be tricky. Um you, you don't have to worry about the three vacation rentals turning into three apartments. Um because you're only giving permission for the tourist lodging's use.
Yeah.
Um if the, if the S U P failed, he goes back to the base. The base rights are still there, which is the single family house of the duplex with that density restriction. And three right next to each other wouldn't lie, so it's good that they're movable. That you can rearrange this in plenty of compliance equipment and stuff, and you're not stuck with a short trip that you can't use.
That's the other part of this, I mean, it was stopping that as far as building something permanent.
The, the previous owner did have a single family home design, it was a nice big house, but they chose to build a smaller house, and that's all.
Well, they're in the middle, they were in the middle of a tennic parcel, and then they then were like, whoa, you know, we like the view, but we're used to having more land, he was a a peaker, I shouldn't say that, he, he liked to always do new stuff, and he felt like being a small kid like that, he wanted to have things to do. So he went back to a laundry parcel, which makes sense.
Um if I were to ask you to take off your landlord or hats and put on your real estate professional hats, um in your opinion, what is the general viability of that property for a single family home in the future? What's the attractiveness and the usability of it?
It was purchased because I thought that my wife and I might have a, a finished home there, meaning down the road, put a, wherever home that thing, one level, um and, I mean, it was it was cool, infinity pool type of thing, you know, I was really thinking a little bit outside the box there, but that's not me. So that's what we found inside and assuming they're right, okay, but the, but the point was, it is a beautiful site to do a household, but it's a small one. You know, it is, it's a small, it's a prominent, and I'm a peaker too. My tractor, my, you know, my big mower wouldn't break there, so you know, yes, but it, it could be, it could be, but here's the thing. Multiple people, when we had it on the market, it was on the market before. Um people are like, this would be a great Airbnb. Everybody has looked at it, I had sort of approached some people about it from the standpoint of you could do an Airbnb there. And everybody's like, oh my gosh, I mean, everybody, every single person is like, this is an Airbnb, this is an Airbnb. And that, that has successful Airbnb, as I was saying, Lisa, when you look at it, they're like, this would work, it has something that's a little bit different. It's got a, you know, it's got a view, and they said that would be something that you could so me, um I analyze and analyze and analyze for at least. And finally, I, some successful guy said, this would end up as. So I'm asking.
One more quick question, um the, are are we able to put stipulations on an S U P?
Mm-hmm, you can condition at the very least the number of units, you know, if you wanted to restrict three.
Hmm.
Um the spacing, if you wanted them to be compact, but close together as described, or spread out more, you can um uh alter your setbacks to, to accommodate that spacing. Um if there are other particular kind of nuisance impacts that you're worried about, let, let me know, and I can try to condition language for you.
What about, um we talked about uh porches? Didn't we talk about porches and how that might um connect them in some way?
Sort of a code connection, if, if you needed to create one structure instead of three, if you tie them together.
Oh.
That might be the building.
That's what we were trying, I, I was trying to get around it, to me, it didn't make sense to like build some cycle stuff and skirt the code, because I had a porch that connected in a one big contemporary type of thing that's sold for the use of skirting something, you know, and I don't skirt it, this is what, this is what it is, that's what, it would be something like that to some degree.
I like the density, I, I mean, I think that's what we've been talking about around town to keep you know, not that you're even talking about clearing land, but you know, I like that you're making use of, of the available land that's there already without having to impact anything else. I like it, and I kind of like the idea, I don't think it's skirting, if you had like a porch connecting all of them, and then, you know, like I, I go on plenty of trips with groups of people, and we all rent little houses like this that are near each other and that are accessible. Like I, I go on plenty of trips with groups of people and we all rent little houses like this that are near each other and that are accessible to each other. Because that's the kind of trip we wanna take. Um, so yeah, I, I, I think that would be neat. Not that you have to do it or. Or that you'd be skirting anything, but it's a neat design option to think about.
That's correct. Maybe it's not as close. To do that. These little units, you know, give me the flexibility to, to order fail. We can take, I mean, they, they, these things resell. I mean, people will buy. I mean, they're, they're, they're like a hot little commodity. Now, and then think of the part of this, I mean, quite frankly, I mean, which is not. So I've been researching the townhouse and goes back to the stuff. If you have a small four hundred square feet, the idea, my idea was. Would somebody go and like spend money in the restaurants, okay? Be- because it's only like. Four hundred square feet versus providing somebody home with a nice kitchen that come in, they bring all their stuff, they make their food and all that type of stuff. I was going from the other standpoint saying, if they have four hundred, you know, yes, they can do it if they want to. But maybe they're gonna Scottville and then maybe I'll, that's again, maybe I'm wrong, maybe. I, I don't know, but I mean, you, you have a stove, you have a, you know what I mean? You have the base stuff in there.
Yeah.
Parking? I think I just wanna make sure that parking is contained on the site. I, I'm really curious how you're gonna map it out to have adequate parking and. Space between the units so they're not on top of each other.
I'm curious to, quite frankly, I, I, as I said, I apologize, Lisa, cause I told you fifty feet. It's not, and that's what I'm saying. We, it may. One. The two and then is, you know, the people, I mean, the market's gonna drive it for the same. Hey, I like the room. Or maybe I think, you know, maybe I can do something else. It would not be three coming in and wants to, to do that. I don't see that. Happening at all. It would not be my preference to, for me to be required to put three there one time. It would be scary. And see, and then. I mean, you can do stuff there. I mean, which I guess is a question that I have is. If, if, you know, based on that site, that was sort of where I was looking at, they may not fit. Does it make a difference if they're elsewhere on that site and you have a special use permit? I don't. Does, do they have to fit right there on that and you look for a special use permit? It goes off of that. Where your, where your parking spaces are?
No, it's just the units itself. Oh, um, um, you can, you can specify in your approval if you want that. The layout of the buildings match the concept shown. So if, if, if this is what you want, you can require this. Or if you're not picky about where on the parcel the three units go, you know, don't, don't do that. And then he has permission to move them. Laterally or twist them or what have you. In, in our other subdivision applications that we've gotten, you know, the, the. Developer shows us a site plan and we say, yeah, that's what we want. Don't change it.
I mean, these things are mobile type thing.
No, I'm just wondering, having, I mean, obviously you've mapped it out on usable land, right?
There was three there because I took my life there with Tony, if you guys have known Tony Nelson. And, cause I was thinking two and my wife said three. And she never ever agrees with technically anything I did. So that's why there's three there. I thought it might be two, but she said, let's do three. And if she wanted to do three, that's why there's three there. And I'd like to stick with three because.
Can I ask what her qualification?
No. She can help you medical, but unless I do my thing, girl's pay my. But she thought, but, but, but she, she does not, yeah. Okay, so that's part of, you know, she's right there. She was like, I could sit here and have coffee. I'm not a tent camper. And she was like, well, if you, if you did this, 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 I could stay there. And she can stay there. That was like, hmm, maybe other people might be able to stay there. Is that, yeah.
Parking?
Yeah, parking would have to be backup, you know.
Up there.
Yeah, as we come in, we'll just have to walk us. I, I, again, I, I don't have it all in that. I mean, I, I don't know.
But you have to.
Yeah.
I know that you would have some thoughts about.
So the market, do with the market. Requires, what from the standpoint that I want it to be nice. If it's gonna be done, I want it to look attractive so that people come. Uh, and, and look at it. I mean, be comfortable and not. He's, you know, if, if they need to be closer parking, you know, that's, I, I, and I don't know the, the. The idea would be, it'll be more research then. I'll go to places, we'll stay at places that have these and obviously the distance and I mean.
Our ordinance requirement is only one space per bedroom. So that if, if, if he was set up as, you know, one bedroom cabins, that's only the apartment spaces and I think he could go more if he thought it was necessary.
So we could put in something like adequate parking.
Um, these, these, these parking regs will apply unless you waive them.
Okay, okay.
With one space per room.
Okay, question. Are you guys ready to make a motion or are we looking to talk some more?
Well, we could close the public hearing first.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from this public hearing?
All right.
Question, I probably missed it. Are these gonna be, uh. Rental units or they're gonna be owner occupied? I, I didn't hear that discussion.
The application is for short term lodging, tourist lodging. So they're tourist lodging, so, um, short term lodging for guests from outside. Similar to a hotel, Airbnb, that sort of thing.
Would they be rental occupied or, or owner occupied?
It's gonna be rental, but on a nightly basis or weekend.
Okay, thank you. I, I didn't get it.
Okay, public hearing closed.
I would like to make a motion that we are. This proposal.
Second.
Can we add a couple of stipulations?
Friendly amendment with, with conditions would be in order.
We've got what we're gonna say, cutters the parking, so we don't have to go there.
Town staff suggests, uh, a condition that there are only a maximum of three. Um, parking seems reasonable.
I agree.
Mobile. I like that outline, but. Definitely not. It's gonna be conceptual in those three.
Absolutely.
All in favor?
I was waiting for this B. Should, should there be something that's like that they're temporary and they get removed?
That's irrelevant because the zoning, we're back to the original, so, right.
Well, if they keep them there and always have to be tourists, whether they've been using them or not.
The, the permission that you're giving is for the use. And the applicant has represented that this is what they're gonna look like. Um, ARB will have that as well, but. That. Structure type is not set in stone. So if this did go really well and the applicant wanted to replace it down the road with a. Permanent thing that didn't look like this anymore, but was still three uses. As long as the use is the same, the look of the structure can change. Um.
Okay, the wording would be reuses.
Three, three, uh, yeah, and then if you.
For three structures?
Three, three distinct structures as. As shown in the application would, would submit. This type of layout. So it can be can, like conditionally set in stone that that would be the general layout, general. Ye- yes, um, can, can do the condition, um, the general layout as shown in the application.
Is there a way that we worded that leaves it open to the ARB to make their. Adjustments to the three or are we giving it too tight?
General, general site plan layout as shown in the application does not. Tie the ARB's hands for their details that zoom in beyond the site level.
So it sounds to me like we have two conditions.
Yep. No more than three and the site plan layout.
Reasonable components to the presentation.
Okay, am I ready to vote?
Do we have to amend the motion first?
It's a friendly amendment. Everyone's in a group, so we should be. All right, both all in favor? All right, very good. Motion passed. Well, our recommendation is to town council. With those conditions, town council will have their own hearing. You know how that works. All right, thank you. All right, six. A.
Do we have to do anything with six C first before we get to common?
Sixty.
That always gets shoved.
No activity. We're still waiting to hear on what the fault the requirements are.
Yeah, there's a, and that's our, that's our legal advice that we don't wanna be reporting out something where. We're, we're not giving adequate fire safety. And this is a good example. I, I don't know what kinds of. Sprinklers, materials, exits, these kinds of units have. And so I, I feel uncertain, you know, if, if Mr. Quick. Fast tracks this and it's open next month. I, I don't wanna give approve, give occupancy approval to something where I'm not certain fire safety of it. So we, we need to know who to talk to about that inspection. And everything else in our ordinance is ready, but I wanna treat the home stays and perspective use permits like this one consistently. Um, but we're, the volunteer firefighters are still trying to figure out what can. What can they do on their own with the training that they have? And when do they need to call a licensed fire marshal? For this. And like, not to make it too complicated, it's probably an exit window, a smoke detector and a fire extinguisher. But how much training do you need to be able to say that?
Right. Okay, so we're kinda tabling that.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Six A. All right, so as I mentioned in our last meeting, I would like. You guys to participate in the process about how we're moving forward. Um, I think Lincoln would be great on this. Also, he presented to us a few months back about. How we should be getting community input, which is a huge part of it. Um, I think we need to, at this point, figure out how we're going to structure those events. Like what are we going to discuss at each of those events and how do we pitch it? Um, but there's a lot more to the process, so I'd like you guys to, those who are better at that sort of structure and. Planning out all those steps than me. Um, I'd like your input on how to structure our. Plan over the course of the next eight months. Well, I think it's amazing that we have someone at the PhD level who could run through some scenarios with us. On how to proceed and maybe what even to, to concentrate on. Um, cause we don't wanna pass up this opportunity, I'd say, to make adjustments to the current con plan. Um, and have it be more towards our goal for the future. Um, so I'd like to propose a special meeting. Or this stress. Question about, um, and not to mention that. Sorry, we can, we need a couple more with them at least. Um, we have gotten a proposal from the Berkeley group about how to proceed and it was. You know, way more expensive than we could afford and, you know, we're kind of five hundred and fifty people. We probably don't need. All of that to that extent. So do you feel like you could review the Berkeley plan and figure out what we need the most? And, and how to proceed and give us a really, really good roadmap?
Sure, yes. So Matt was discussing the Berkeley group proposals briefly. So I'd be glad to take a look at that and compare with the previous work that we did. Just because I'm familiar with this and try out a proposed way of going.
Okay.
We can just discuss that at the next special meeting.
Yes, so you'd be able to do a special meeting then? Give us a. How much time do you need for that? Maybe a couple of weeks?
Yes, because I'm finishing the semester on the twelfth of May.
Wow.
Yeah. So I'd prefer to have at least, uh, one week after that.
Um, when is our next meeting? It's June. And I guess Memorial Day is, oh, we're second.
Twenty seven, twenty eight.
Or, okay, there's the last Monday, Monday.
Okay.
Twenty nine, that's a few. I was looking at Sunday. Okay, so three weeks would be. Around the nineteen. If you like to.
If you didn't, if you didn't marry, like Thursday, the eighteen. I'm, I'm on the clock then and would be very happy to, you know, do this as a sign off. If you did it towards the end of May, I would probably come. Dress down as a citizen and just give my personal opinion, which might also.
Well, that would be.
Yeah, I'll, I'll still live here.
And that's not gonna conflict with ARB. I don't remember what Thursday, their meeting.
They do first, Thursday. Usually, so they, they, they're like this.
Might actually, might, um.
A scan.
Yeah, is that the third Thursday? Okay. Back to the drawing board. What about the seventeen?
That's been typed for you.
Or Tuesday. Ending the semester in fall. Well, you said a week, so I was thinking six days, we're, we're five days. All right, I'm pushing it, I'm pushing it.
What about Monday, the twenty second? Would that be a possibility here?
I mean, you could, uh, fourth Monday.
Matt would just be a citizen. And then we could, we could hear all of his opinions. I really want, I want to hear that.
Entirely unbuttoned.
What about Friday, the nineteen?
No.
Matt will be here, but as a private citizen, no.
No.
Okay, all right, so Monday, the twenty second, does that interfere with any other meetings in town?
No, um, council's on the fifteen. Yeah, so these, these five Monday months are helpful for us.
Sounds good. And I can, uh, provide you with some information in advance. So you can review it over the weekend. I think that'd be beneficial, yeah.
What about that Wednesday? Oh.
If it was Tuesday, the next day. What about Tuesday, the twenty third?
Can come on Tuesdays.
Okay. All right. We're good with it. Okay.
What time's your exercise class?
It's Saturday.
To when?
Seven forty.
Why don't we just meet after?
I might be branching. We'd love to go to next class, but I think this. Yeah, it is a very important part of my health. Very.
You can't do this, it's not healthy. Pelotonics during the planning committee.
There you go.
Right, exactly. I can, I can, I can help you carry a peloton up there. We should all have those, the way you power the building yourself. Community engagement, you know, it's all right. It'd be pretty funny, so tourists. More, more community.
What about, um, coming up with? I mean, even our next steps from here, we started talking about the old con plan. And got sidetracked even during that discussion and didn't continue it. So what's the best way to proceed from here? Should we be going through this each topic individually? Would we, would we decide that was taking a really long time? So what should we be doing? What did you, you guys had community suggestions?
I thought we had decided to have for each of us to focus on a specific chapter and then we would hold. Um.
Our last town meeting.
Yeah, our last initiative was to each of us view our thoughts on land use. We never got to them, we were all gonna do the same section.
I'm just gonna go back to our intern, and since you have experience. It might be helpful to. Kinda think how you would tailor like your suggestion in terms of how we would follow through on it. We've, as a council or as a commission, have talked about. At one point dividing it up into either areas of specialties or areas of concentration, it may be when you come back. After the semester's over, you could give us a couple recommendations on how you would see us moving forward, that's a thought.
And if you have any suggestions for what we can do to prepare for this meeting. You could email us and let us know if you have something that we could do to prepare.
Pre-game work.
Well, and to, to clarify, what we wanted to do first was to review the plan from five years ago and see where we're at now. How much of it has gotten accomplished and how big a priority are the different parts that haven't gotten. Accomplished, so what needs to be included in the next plan, so that's, that's where we started, so I don't know if that's, I mean, this seems to make sense.
I think one other thing that would be important is if you could actually think of how to do it in a way. Where the prep could be done during an exercise class, I think.
It sounds very prudent to, uh, review the existing documents, so do it in a way that, um, you don't look at it all at once, that might be. Somewhat overwhelming. But look at it in certain chunks that coincide with our drafting of new sections, potentially, but let me think a little bit more on that. I'll make a recommendation.
Yeah, cause, cause we also wanna have community engagement, so how's that look, should we? Should we, you know, cover land use among ourselves and then have a land use event or not, cause maybe we decide some. Section doesn't need to get included and maybe, or maybe it doesn't merit its own public engagement session, cause it's not that. Impactful, I don't know, um, so alright, that's a lot to think, we're gonna feel good about that?
I do, yes, yeah, and I, based on the previous work, I already have know the context, so I think. I think we can have a fruitful meeting on the twenty second.
I don't think it would be a terrible idea for us to put together some information on what at the town we want to see. In the future, or. Tire factory. You know, if by chance someone would want to approach us.
Unfortunately, that question's not gonna go away, and this con plan update can't dodge that.
Yeah, so why not talk about? What we'd like to see, I mean, we don't make that decision, but. Is that part of what we're doing here with the con plan is, you know, maybe specifically talking about that land. And coming to some sort of conclusion.
Right, focus on some of the issues that's been particularly contentious for us.
As, um, just out of curiosity, has Southern said what they plan on doing with it, or they turning it into? Industrial park or?
I haven't, I haven't seen or heard much movement on it, I haven't gotten any like official filings about, you know, here's construction happening. And there hasn't been any submissions, um, that's been pretty quiet, and you've seen them shift to the uptown site instead.
And what's going on with that, I mean, I know we did the zoning.
We, we got that, um. Yeah, the, the preliminary stuff we're doing with you. Um, that's not finished yet, so nothing has changed on the ground. This stuff does move really slowly. So, I don't. I haven't gotten anything kind of formal since, since planning commission got action.
Lisa, did you ever talk to town council about a special use permit idea? Yeah, and they would like to, um, continue dialogues with Southern.
Okay.
Uh, so I think Morse and I had started to talk to Southern and will continue, and we're. You know, there hasn't, as he said, when he was here that day, he said it to put forth any plan, cause he wants to hear what we would like to see. So that we can be the drivers behind that, so that there's more buying and it really represents what the community wants, so. Um, and that's where we're at, he doesn't wanna put forth any new plan, however. You know. We, we talked with town council about things that they'd like to see, we kinda touched on that here, things that we might like to see, um. Trails being the thing that we all kinda have consensus on, Pollet Town, that access. Will be gone unless something changes.
You don't think that's something that could go through scan when? You know, like come to an agreement with scan?
I, I imagine scan would be fine with that, we'd lose, you know, the remainder of that trail.
But I mean, if that were to be the point of contention.
One, one thing, one thing I would just add on that, so to go way back when we. Worked with Dr. Hertz to get the, what? We refer to as the Mint Creek Trail, which. And scan was involved in that process. At least your. And was part of the idea, so we got the access all the way up. Scan basically would have it, it's that last two hundred yards that they held back and was an agreement, so at the moment. It's not that they've shut anything, the agreement is still there, it's just a matter of that, that it's, it's an agreement and not. An easement, because it's, because it is that, it is something that could. Be, you know, not allowed, so to speak, and I will say years ago when we worked it and we did work on that agreement area, but. Some of the residents were the happiest of the time, and so cleaning up the, the trail access was there, but if the people. Use it freely, yeah, yeah, just because, well, if you look at the actual, if, if you study what's. The actual, uh, land, the land that's used by the people who live around there, I think. Approaches on what actually is land owned by the.
Parting trailhead thing has always been done, it's, yeah, it's not a good spot for a high volume trailer.
But to, to follow what our chair has said. It is true for sure that there could be an ongoing dialogue between the council and the planning commission to figure out. How do we? Look at public space in that area to try to figure out how we maximize both. Free space that is either a part of the park, or whether it's something that creates a trail. And I think there's agreement that. The council and the planning commission would have, that didn't change any. Increase in dwellings, but I think that's safe to say. The, the sticking point would be what would we do if we had a conversation about changing well. But without that, I think there's an agreement on, on the idea of how to. Move the states around, that would be most effectively using a park or in a trail.
Um, can you show? Sorry, can we even, like, is, is, are you guys okay with, I just wanted to look at that, um. Like an aerial overview of the whole thing and really. Solidify in my mind, like, what area? Belongs to them and would be developed as, as the plan currently stands.
Gotcha.
And what access we have now that would be lost.
So. This is the primary parcel, one hundred and fifty acres. And it has the split zoning basically by terrain, the fifty, fifty acre village residential portion goes from. Here to here, around the wall, this is flatter. And then it gets more rugged as you go this way, and it's picking up these creeks, those have a little bit of ease. They also have the twenty eight platted lots here, which is about sixty acres altogether. So the, the preliminary piece that you saw was just during the by right, that was dividing up the hundred and fifty acres here and making. The forty four lots on it. This is a separate plan, which is still buildable, still exists and is by right, and they don't connect. We currently have the Mint Creek Sewer Line Trail, which stays on this side of this little run and goes up like this. As Mr. Grisco was saying, the permanent part of it, um, stops right here, and there's the redicable part that just comes down to connect right here. You're not saying that they're gonna revoke it, but it doesn't have the same legal status as the other, and it is also true, what Miss Andrew was saying, for scan land here. This is a bigger, better trailhead, which is not, uh, impeded by losing the little piece up here. So you could, you know, walk around and come this way, or park here and come this way and still have your connection. Like, what's on the table for con plan is, what do you wanna do with all of this? If not by right, cause one strategy is by right is fine. We don't wanna do any other negotiating, just let this happen and show that, if that's, if that's not the community's best interest. Okay, what, what different than forty four plus twenty eight you want?
And this, the Mint Creek Estates was. Decided on, was plotted out years ago and offers no connectivity to the trails. And to the rest of the parcels, and Pollet Town will have no connectivity. To the East Village or to Mint Creek Estates, so when we have conversations about creating a walkable community. You know, we don't have that built in, and I, I think it would be in the community's best interest to build that in. To get some of that, but that's going to be. You know, a, a negotiation, so I would like to see the trailhead at Pollet Town remain. Perhaps even be built out to have some parking. Cause as we pointed out, there's really not a, an option for that now, but I'd also like to see. Those three communities be connected so that we're one Scottville, so that people can walk to their neighbors. And not have to get in the car and drive all the way around to Albivanna Spring Road. Uh, Pat Dennis, and. I mean, it would be even better if you can drive between the communities, but when we talked with, um, Southern. That's, you know, that's gonna be a little bit more complicated because of giving up more land.
One of the things to point out, just to, to go back. Ten years ago, when. When I first started the park project, we did not have town access from the town, like we, there was no legal access on the other end, so. We had to win the lawsuits, we had to trade land, we had an eighty five thousand dollar grant. And we had donated land, so there were multiple things that happened down here to get the access, as he's pointing out, so one of the ones. Was the grant where you walk in today, that was an eighty five thousand dollar grant, there's also. The, the lawsuit that we had to win. To get the access to go across the bridge, and then there's the traded land, Doug Gold gave us a little bit of land and had. The other part of it, so there was massive amount of. Six to eight years worth of multiple things that happened, and then traded land, so flipping it to the other side. When you think about. What did we do, so now they appear smart that they held back a little bit of land. And that connection on the other side, so that could just be one of the pieces, so if you think of it. We do need that connection, but then there's multiple other aspects that we would want, things that go into. What are the parcels that are created, trails that are there? Parts created, so there's, the, the only difference about this. Is it's more hypothetical, back then. You know, like my, my son-in-law or others who do that and that, uh, they used all that stuff for years and years. Now we officially have the ability to do that, but we don't on the other end yet, so on the one hand, I feel encouraged. Having seen a lot of the things that happened over the last ten or twelve years to get the other side taken care of. It's true up here, it's more, there, there's a lot of pieces, I'll just give you one example, when you think of. The Van Food Nature Area and you start to think about. What natural pieces of that land would wanna add into the Van Food Nature Area, some of it are pieces that are really of no use to build houses. So when you start getting closer, you would wanna add maybe a slot of an acre here or another. Corridor there, and so some of that needs to be, in fact, I would even come back to you as. Maybe something to think about this summertime, when you look at that piece of land. There are natural pieces that are gonna be almost no use to the builder, but will be of great use to us because it will widen. A corridor or path or trail, and then it might eventually create further park space into this new. Area where there's gonna be future development, so some of it is not just. A matter of moving a few houses around, some of it's little studying the map. And saying, you know what, this little valley here or this little curve there. Needs to be added to what we are, we have a real opportunity to do that if we study really carefully. So that's kinda what I'm saying, is, is the very specific about it to, to get into there.
Wow, so are they gonna submit it as you came?
No, it's the other way around, we, I think we would have to go back to them and say, we'd have to do our homework and say. We would like this border, or we would like this trail, or. Well, no, I mean, we, well, no, so on our end, at the moment, I think there's. Agreement and planning commission and non-town council to say. We wanna have our K G D too, so this is what we want. And so if we didn't ask for any more density, I think nobody's gonna disagree between the two bodies. But getting into the density issue, that's a different discussion, but the first thing would be, I think, to figure out. What would we actually want without changing the density, you know, I think, so in other words, what would be the corridor, what would be the? I mean, I think that you would even say the same thing, using the land, I'm sure you see it in there when you're on trail, there's places where. There's fifty yard or that two hundred yards, it's gonna be useless to house, but it's gonna be very useful to us.
So, I mean, let's, let's look at that plan that was drawn out, that is a study of the topography and that is. Perfectly buildable the way that it is.
Yes.
Is it, is it what they want? Probably not, I mean, is it less than ideal for some people, yeah, maybe some people would love it though. So that's a buildable plat that's gonna get filed with the county.
Unless we do otherwise.
Well, and, and they can, they can still get filed. Because it's, it's been, we had to approve it, and. But, you know, the question is, could we do better and, and what if anything would we have to give up, I mean. I think they are going to want something, I don't think they're going to say, oh, sure, I'm gonna build these trails for you and I'm gonna give you that trail.
Miss Andrew, your, your question, this, um, it lets us do a very practical con plan update. That we, we get to go first and kind of lead this dance of, here's what the town's community goals are. Have our community conversations, lay that out and say. You know, here, here's the twenty year goal for this site. This type of application will be seen very favorably and not anything else, so for them to, it would be. Wise for them to wait on an application until after this top line update was done. And then they could apply with something that they had confidence would be successful because we had all approved our con plan together. So again, you might be setting your system around that thing.
Yeah, I think that's very important for our land use discussion, that is, to look at actions. You know, where are we with each rehearsal? And what do we see for the future that these things could actually accommodate?
Yeah, and it, it could just be even like a big picture, like. We want a daycare and we want to have that connectivity and, okay, someone go ahead and, and. Draw it up with those things in mind, yeah, um, you know, we. You know, your point earlier about the tire factory and what do we wanna see there, it's also what is feasible to be, to be built. But now we have an opportunity to really shape that. Even if it's not the tire factory, we could say, well, what do we want, I don't know, do we, can we put a daycare up? On that East Village site, with Mint Creek site, it's possible. Maybe we can get a ten of the tire factory, but let's have a conversation about what do we want as a town.
I think that's really great, I think we missed that opportunity before all of that was going on, I think this could solidify.
What we would find favorable, so there's no more, you know, waste. The, the comp plan? Well, this is our last official meeting with Mr. Lawless. And I want to say thank you for everything that you've done for us over the last few years, five years. Um, I mean, your insights, your experience, your um. Yeah, level headedness, um you've really been able to guide and make complicated and. Uh weighted conversations with an enormous amount of professionalism. And I know that I've found you to be a great resource and I will miss you very much. And I think I'm speaking for this body in saying that we will miss you and your guidance, but we wish you the best.
Thank you, I appreciate it, that these um. Documents and plans are some of the best um legacies that we've used in this work, because they do guide what gets built. The kinds of poems and bridges that people have for years to come, so uh I, I look back on this past planning work with a lot of pride and uh look forward to um. Keep it in touch and see what I'll come up with in the future, thank you, it's my pleasure.
That's gonna be wildly, so that's all. Mother Nature has no more snow. Zip line into the river? Over the road, right into the river?
Alright, do we have any other, oh, um follow up, Mr. Um. Kilar. Remind, just seeing him reminded me that I would like to have. A list of the right of ways that we're, that we have in town, so that we could make good land use. Decisions. Because I don't know if you guys realize it, well, Dan you probably do, um there's a. A bunch of right of ways on people's land that, you know, the town in theory has access and could. Create trails, so when we're having these walkability conversations, it would be helpful to know what we have access, whether it's. Something that we wanna take advantage of or not. Maybe take advantage of, is the right word, but you know, make use of in a, in a good meaningful way.
Do you have any land use access to the river? We don't have.
One day.
One day.
And then next meeting, we're having our traffic expert come in and talk about, um.
Yeah, Michael, Michael Barnes from VDOT would be your, uh, your guest speaker on June fifth. It wouldn't hurt to do a vote on the special meeting, you can probably just lock down the time, I'm assuming. Yeah, time and place and date. What's our?
That we did that's a meeting on June, no. May twenty second, which is a Monday at seven P M. To discuss. Doesn't go very well when I do that, okay, to discuss um our strategic plan for the comp plan. And um.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Great, all in favor? Good, thank you.
Wow, guys, this is like the first time in years, been before nine. And it's significantly before nine.